Thank you, Councilman Jackson. Councilman George?
No comment.
We have a motion by Councilman College, a second by Councilman Anderson. All in favor? Councilman George?
Yes.
Motion carries. That brings us to business agenda item number two. Consider a request for a 307-foot variance to square footage requirements for an accessory building in an R1 low-density, single-family residential zoning district located at 2312 Santa Cruz, Gochum, Mississippi, GPC number 22-36-VAR, PID number 86302008.000 by Planning Director, Mr. Scott Ankersen.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. The planning department has received this request from my lot for the 307 square foot variance, square footage requirements for a separate building. The application fee of $175 was paid on July 21st, 2022, and all public notice requirements have been met. So the applicant would like to put a 1,600-square-foot 40x40 accessory structure on his property for the described purpose of vehicular storage. Of course, the UDO states that in an R1 district, all accessory structures shall not exceed 20% of the rear lot area or 50% of the principal structure area, whichever is less. The proximate area of the rear yard is 10,000 square feet of total square footage of the existing house, and attached garage is 2,587 square feet, which will allow the applicant to build an accessory structure of 1,293 square feet. The difference is in what is allowed, 1,293 square feet in the size of this proposed accessory building, 600 square feet is approximately 300 square feet, so that's what we came up with the variance number. The applicant needs to ask for this 300 square foot variance for the proposed accessory building. I'll also add that if the applicant's structure were above baseball elevation and compliant with the NIP requirements, he would be able to just have this as an addition. He would not need this variance at all. But because his home is below baseball elevation, he can't put an addition on it without elevating it to the baseball elevation, actually two foot above our freeboard, which would not, you know, structurally work out well with the existing house. So, to me, it does play a part in hardship for the applicant. So the criteria for approval, I've included from section 4.18.4 of the Development Ordinance and the Planning Commission recommends the City Council approve the request with the evidence presented, meaning that the criteria for variance is due to a hardship created by the NIP's Fena restrictions. I've included the, except for the GPC meeting, they denied 1/2022, and the complete package. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Ankersen. Do we have any public comments on this agenda item?
You have any questions for me? I'm the one that's doing this. How you doing, Scott?
We will if they do somebody will ask. Otherwise, you don't have to speak tonight if you don't want to.
I'm completely open to anything.
Okay.
It just happened, also, the building is going to be the same color as the house.
Okay.
It's not going to be like purple or something. It is exactly the same color as the house. And the building itself will be the only structure on the property, and the drive will be hidden actually by a 75-foot oak tree, so you really won't even see it. And like Scott said, FEMA hadn't come in and raced four feet. You can't put four feet next to nothing, and there's no way you can put the two together. That's the reason that it's going to be a separate building.
Okay. Thank you for that. Do we have a motion to approve the 307-foot variance to square foot footage requirements for an accessory building in an R1 low-density, single-family residential zoning district located at 2312 Santa Cruz, Gochum, Mississippi, GPC 22-36-VAR, PID number 86302008.000?
I make a motion we approve Planning Commission's recommendation and approve the variance.
We got a motion by Councilman College. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Alvin. Any discussion? Start with Councilman Alvin.
No discussion.
Councilman Anderson?
No.
Councilman College?
I'm glad you brought about the tree, because I was going to ask if it was going to be blocked by the tree line, and you already answered that for me, so I'm good.
Counselor.
Councilman Gallo?
Have you had any comments from neighbors about your building?
Everybody, there's one of them right here. Yeah, I'm the next door neighbor.
State your name and address.
Sam Baxter, 2320 Santa Cruz.
And you don't have a problem with him?
Pardon?
You don't have a problem with him?
No, sir.
He's going to let you use part of it?
No, I mean, what he'll do is he'll get us all of his tools out of the house and I'll be able to get to him.
I don't have anything else.
Councilman Jackson?
No comment.
Councilman George?
No comment.
I just want to thank you also for investing and not, and saving and keeping, protecting the live back there on your property, because it is a beautiful tree you have there. So, thank you for trying to work around the...
Well, we're setting it between all the trees, so we don't have to cut any of them down.
Well, that's very nice. It looks very nice out there, so thank you. We have a motion by Councilman College, a second by Councilman Alvin. All in favor? Councilman George?
Motion carries.
That brings us to our business agenda item number three. Consideration of a special exception that would allow a used RV dealership C3 in a C3 Highway Commercial Zoning District located at 3708 Highway 90, Gochum, Mississippi, GPC, case number 22-27-SE by Planning Director, Mr. Scott Ankersen.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. The planning department has received this request from Family RV Sales LLC for a special exception that would allow a used RV dealership in the C3 Highway Commercial Zoning District. The application fee of $250 was paid on June 15th, 2022, and all public notice requirements have been met. Some background on the property. Has an existing construction component of the property. There is potable water, wastewater services existing. The surrounding zoning for this property is C3 Highway Commercial and R1 Low Density Single Family Residential to the rear, which is mostly vacant at this time. Comprehensive plans feature land use designation designates high-impact commercial for this property. I've included the review criteria for the special exceptions outlined in 4.16.4 of the UDO, along with the applicant's response to the staff findings to those criteria. I've also included the UDO's definition of hardship for your review. And the recommendation from the Planning Commission is that the Planning Commission recommends approval of requests with limitations that work on the RVs will be limited to aesthetically cleaning the units and replacement of air-conditioning units. No welding, cutting, forching, or structural repairs are to be done on the site. The City Council may approve the special exception, approve the special exception with changes or deny the special exception. Again, I've included the complete package and the minutes accepted in the 9/20 meeting. You have any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Ankersen. Do we have any public comments on this agenda item? No public comments. Do we have a motion by council?
I'll make a motion that we approve planning, special exception with the Planning Commission's stipulations, and add on top of that that the vehicle shall be fully operational at all times while on the property, meaning that it cannot be up on jacks, cannot have tires removed. It will be working, fully working operational. All RVs on that site will be fully functional to be on that property.
We have a motion by Councilman College. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Gallo. Any discussion? Start with Councilman Alvin.
Oh, I had a citizen contact me with a couple of questions that couldn't make it here. Are they all going to be used RVs? Or are there any new RVs?
As far as I understand, no, except that they're all going to be used.
All used?
Yes, yes.
How old are they? What's the oldest?
The oldest will probably be 14, 15.
Okay. Oh. Are they being sold off that property?
Yes, they will be sold off that property.
They'll be sold? Do you have another shop somewhere else?
Not at this time. We did have one, but we had to shut down because of COVID, and we shut down and actually lost ours.
Where was that at?
That was in Moss Point.
Okay. All right, that's all I have.
Thank you, Councilman Alvin. Councilman Anderson?
Councilman College, your exceptions that you put in there, that will cover the fact that they can't bring in wrecked RVs and repair them and rebuild them?
Yeah, they've got to be fully functional to be on that property.
Okay. Is there any requirements set by the landowner, Mr. Mallett, that we know of?
The only ones I know of that are the ones the Planning Commission put on there. Got it?
Mr. Mallett, the Planning Commission meeting didn't state any conditions he put on them, but I guess I could get a question from Mr. Mallett.
Well, I'm sure he'll have requirements for cleanliness and whatnot like that, I'm sure. I mean, he keeps, he keeps a pretty clean yard, always has there.
Can I say something?
Yes.
Their former business was across the street from my home, and it was always neat and well-kept. I wish they were still there.
Good. I'm glad you...
So...
Thank you, Teresa. That's all I got.
Thank you, Teresa. Did you have any more questions, Councilman?
No.
That's it.
Councilman College?
I understand you're going to be leasing this parcel property, correct, from Al Brothers?
Yes, sir.
Are you keeping your RVs and so forth strictly on that smaller parcel, or are you utilizing other areas of the property also?
We're going to keep them on that small parcel, and if we have to do any cleaning, any cleaning, like washing or anything like that, it would be the next thing over to wash it.
Okay. And how many are you planning to have at one time on this property?
It would probably be seven to 15.
Seven, 15? So, the reason I'm asking this is we have some other properties around here that have a little, seem to be getting a little overbearing with some of their, the items that they're selling, and we don't want another one of those. So, would you be willing to accept a limitation on how many you could put on a property at one time?
I mean, if it's, to an extent, yes, I would, and the reason why is because I would have to have a variety of campers for camper buyers, and if you can't have like five or six of them on there, and because I can't make no money and I can't live there, because the family own business.
Right.
But yes, I would, I would, yes.
You would, you don't want a limitation, or you would be willing to go with like a...
No, it would be fine as long as it's not very low.
No, no, we wouldn't go very low. So, I mean, what would be a limitation that you'd be willing to live with?
Probably 15, around there.
15?
Yeah.
Does he have room for 15? He may have room for 50.
Well, that's why, he said 15, so I was gonna, so, I mean, if he's willing to do that, would anybody be willing to...
Well, I seen how much room he has actually, that has for...
Well, he said 15. That's what I asked him. He said 15, so, I mean, would anybody be willing to entertain an amendment to the motion that will restrict the maximum amount of RV sales on that property to be 15 at any given time?
I'll make an amendment to the motion that we limit number of RVs on that property to 15.
Second. We have an amendment to the motion by Councilman Gallo to limit it to 15 on the property RVs, and we have a second to that by Councilman Alvin. Any discussion on the, we'll finish the discussion on the original motion, then we'll come back to this amendment. Um, no. Councilman Jackson? Councilman George?
No comment.
Okay. Any, on the amendment, any, Councilman Alvin? Any?
No.
Councilman Anderson?
No.
Councilman College?
No.
Councilman Gallo?
No.
Councilman Jackson?
No.
Councilman George?
I'm in favor on the amendment.
All in favor on the original motion? Councilman George, how did you vote on the amendment?
He voted.
Uh, yeah.
How do you made on the original motion?
Yeah.
Motion carries on both motions. That brings us to business agenda item number four. Consideration of a special exception that would allow a cannabis processing facility in a C3 Highway Commercial Zoning District, GPC case number 22-29-SE, by Planning Director, Mr. Scott Ankersen.
Thank you, Mayor. The planning department has received this request from Glenn A. Mallett for a special exception that would allow cannabis processing facility in a C3 Highway Commercial Zoning District at 3708 Highway 90. The application fee of $250 was paid on July 29th, 2022, and all public notice requirements have been met. So, this is, this property is, is next to the small parcel that we talked about in the last case. It's a larger parcel. The total area of these parcels is 8.75 acres. There is potable water and wastewater services, and again, the current surrounding building is the highway commercial, C3, and R1 low-density residential, which is mostly vacant. The comprehensive plans feature land use designation, again, is high-impact commercial. I've included the special exception criteria is outlined in 416.4 of the UDO, and also the definition of hardship in the ordinance for your review. The Planning Commission recommends approval of requests based on the evidence presented that meets the criteria from the UDO. The City Council may approve the special exception, approve the special exception with changes or deny the special exception. Again, I've included the application in the complete package. If you have any questions, I'll answer them. That's my ability, and also the applicant's here tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Ankersen. Any public comments on this business agenda item? If you have any comments, stand up, state your name, address, and you got three minutes.
Gentlemen, I'm Robert Demme. I represent the parties of interest, both the, the, I'm sorry, there's too many. It's made it worse. The parties of interest here, the parties, one that owns the property, the other that is attempting to lease the property. The reason we're here today is because the string of requirements of the state to do a cannabis processing facility requires that the applicant have a lease or a tenant lease. Now, of course, that would be approved, given the amount of, the amount of money required to invest into such a facility if the zoning wasn't correct. One thing that I would like to state, and I want to incorporate everything that, that Mr. Ankersen said, so it takes me a lot of time to explain the special exception, but you guys have the special exception over here, which we don't have in Biloxi, and it's, it's an amazing process, because it doesn't involve the land, and it may revoke amongst subsequent owners. I wish we had that with our, our plan, which we don't. So, that gives you guys the opportunity to back out of this at, at many different times down, down the line, down the road here. What the Planning Commission focused on really was, was security. The state invokes a stringent security provision, right? And it's mandated and regulated by the state. One of the other issues that was addressed, the Planning Commission, was the concern for ingress and egress. Well, this is a processing facility, it's not a dispensary, so there isn't a lot of traffic in and out, it's employees going there. This property, in the past, formerly had 50 dump trucks going in and out all the time. One of those hardship issues that he addressed pertains to that. Given the industrialization changes and the modernization of development, that property is barely used now, and so it sits there vacant, and this gives this property an opportunity to be useful, develop commerce in the city of Goshay, and thereby returning economic gains and tax revenues for the city. Finally, one of the other major concerns by the Planning Commission was its appearance to the community. Now, again, it's regulated by state law, and the state restricts or prohibits the use of signage pertaining to marijuana, or reference to marijuana. So, it will be nice, orderly, signage will not have pot leaves everywhere or anything of, of the like. It'll be very cleanly, well-kept, well-run. The businesses that are on the same parcel are all barricaded off by concrete barricades, so there will be no co-mingling of businesses or staff or patrons of the businesses. I'm here, you guys, for any questions you may have in the next portion of your, your process.
Thank you, Mr. Demme. We appreciate you coming over from Biloxi, and thank you for serving the citizens of Biloxi. They're blessed to have you.
Well, thank you. I don't know if all of them agree to that.
Do we have any public comments?
Hang on, Robert, just hang on.
No public comments? Do we have a motion to approve a special exception that would allow cannabis processing facility in a C3 Highway Commercial Zoning District, GPC case number 22-29-SE?
I'll make a motion that we acknowledge Planning Commission's recommendation to approve the special exception.
We have a motion by Councilman College. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Gallo. Any discussions? Start with Councilman Alvin.
Just like to say, we just went through this process with the cannabis facility on Ladner Road, and like I said then, it's a huge paradigm shift for me, in that I'm a career law enforcement officer, and I spent a career trying to get that off the street. So, it's hard for me to get my mind wrapped around after 31 years of law enforcement or try, trying to legalize it. Well, it's, it's legal now, but it's just, it's just a big change in how I've done things for the last 31 years. I've seen the agenda item, and it's very thoroughly done, well-done. It just, in good conscience, I don't think I can, I can support it. That's all I have.
Thank you, Councilman Alvin. Councilman Anderson?
Yes, is there a plan to build a new building onto this existing building, or are you going to use existing building that's there? What's the plan on the...
The plan is to use the existing structure, and from Mallett, the owner, has already put in considerable amounts of money to capital improvements on that property. They've done installation to, to make sure that it mitigates any potential smell, which is already a bad amount for these types of facilities. He's put in, spent the entire property, which is part of the compliance with the state security requirements. So, there's, there's a, a building on the property that we intend to use and potentially expand into another portion of the building that's separated by a breezeway. There's no common wall with this building and any other business.
Okay. Show up, the point, is it .75 acres that you're leasing? Scott, what is this?
That was the parcel for the RV.
It's on the drawing. It says, it's the first half of the building.
Here we, we're talking about all these businesses on this one parcel, and we're always coming up with this 8.7, 8.75 acres, but each one of these businesses shows that over here, the parcel number, PID number, is approximately .75 acres. So, the RV business is .75 acres, and it shows this one to be .75 acres.
I think that the point was just to point out to you that the smaller parcel was the .75 acres, and then the larger one is the rest.
But then the larger, the man owns all of it, 8.7.
There's your property, right here.
Yeah, I understand, and I'm just saying, we keep talking about 8.75 acres, but this business is on .75 acres, and it shows most of that .75 acres as being a parking lot. Is that...
That is accurate.
That's what I'm saying that way.
It is.
Not adding on to that.
No, I do, no construction or building, yes, sir.
But you could maybe enlarge it by taking more of the building in later?
Correct, the, the existing building.
Is that, is that okay with what they're doing here, or will they have to come back?
I'm sorry, I was looking at the...
Will they have to come, will they have to come back to us later to get more of that building and a larger parcel?
Yes, sir. Any expansion of this would require...
You realize that?
Yes.
Okay. All right, that's all I got.
And just so everybody knows, and attached to the agenda online, it's a colored rendering, and it has the first half of the main building. Mr. Demme, correct, and Mr. Mallett, it's the first front part to about middle ways, and then the parking lot would be to the west, a portion of that.
Right, right through breezeway between the two buildings. It's joined by a common roof, but no common wall.
Right.
I, I got one more question.
Okay. Thank you. I just wanted to make it clear to the citizens that we're here, so they would know what portion we're talking about.
What you're going to process is, where, where is it coming from? Do you know yet? Is it within the county, or within the three counties, or...
We don't know yet. That'll, that'll depend on who gets cultivation licenses, where they come from, and it'll all be transported under licensed transportation companies. All of this will be regulated by the state, and it'll gain the authority to move and operate these businesses, again, through the law passed by the legislature.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I got, man.
Thank you, Councilman Anderson. Councilman College?
I'll just review it through there and see which parcels. So, it's actually three parcels that's getting the special exception based on this building right here. Is that, is that my understanding?
There are actually two parcels. The .75 acre parcel is the RV sales, the last case we heard. That is the RV sales parcel, the smaller.
Well, what I'm seeing on, on the coverage sheet for this right here, let me scroll back to it. Calls out for...
This portion's actually on...
Well, that's what I'm trying to...
The front parcel.
Here we go. It was 4003, 4017, and 4009.
Correct, there are three parcels.
So, it's three parcels. So, 4009 is actually the parcel that has, that we just approved the RV sales on.
Correct, that's correct.
So, why would that be a part of this special exception here?
I think because it's all one owner, she just wanted to include all of the land on your sheet to show you the entire site. Because right now, the site is, you know, the, the last business that was on here, it kind of incorporated all of that, so...
Well, I've got a kind of concern that if we go on that, because from there, just on this special exception, then they could expand beyond just the front of the building, and we're giving them approval based on this special exception. Is that correct?
I don't understand.
If we approve the special exception for all three parcels, then if they ever want to expand or go beyond that, then from what they initially say, in the front part of that building, between the breezeway, then they have authorization for this council to do so.
Any, any expansion at all from, from what they're being allowed to do with this specific application would require a new special exception?
So, how are we stipulating that specifically the front portion of this building?
I think that's a, a great opportunity to, to solve that, is by, by adding an amendment to stipulate that the first portion from the front to the breezeway would be restricted to this license. If this is a special exception, anything greater than that would require future consideration by council.
Which I think everything's really on this item, is only on two parcels. It's only on the 8243-4017 and the 823, 8243-4003, which is possibility, not even on the second parcel. Mr. Mallett might could answer that. I don't, the breezeway is probably on that property line. Do you think, Mr. Mallett? Do you not?
At least he's asking for approximately one acre from the front, like you said, there's a separation between the two buildings.
Yeah.
Yeah, close to that line.
That's what I, on, so I really think it's probably only on the one parcel, but we should include...
I hate to, I hate, yeah, I'd hate to do that, but I think we ought to add a stipulation that it's a, a specific portion of the existing building at this time for a special exception rather than just a canvas for three different sites, three different properties.
Do a square footage of it.
Well, I don't know the square footage of the building, but they can identify.
But I would just include those two parcels.
Well, I think he's still, if we include the two parcels, it still would satisfy his concern, because there's another structure, there's two other structures on that, on the...
He can say the breezeway.
But, I mean, what's, we're saying, if we approve all these, let's say, these two properties, that not only we are approving the building that he's got in the red, that he's got the area to the north that's part of the office building separated by the breezeway, then you've got two covered storage units right now that have the flutes on one side and I think boats on the other. So, we're given kind of a blank canvas on the entire facility. So, what I'm trying to figure out is, do we want to go with this blank coverage for the special exception?
That's the other acre, those other buildings are on another acre, this area of...
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
This is a special exception to allow a cannabis facility on that property.
Yeah, processing facility.
We're just doing a special exception. He wants, don't you want to lease this to somebody to come in there? You're not going to do it yourself, are you?
No, no. Sure, I'm just leasing it to somebody. Mr. Mallett's leasing it to a company out of, well, there's actually, the partners are here in Mississippi, and they're, they're leasing from him to do this.
Now, if you lease it to them, them people have got to come back to us.
For square footage.
For square footage? I don't think, just like the building over there had to come back to show us all the requirements of what they were going to do. I would think that somebody which is going to lease property from him has got to come back in here. We just can't going to give it to a fly-by-night outfit.
I would say not for a special exception. Would you prove, I think they're, it looks to me like they're co-applicants.
They're co-applicants on here. So Mr. Mallett did it with the, um, business on here.
Yeah, all he has to do is apply for a building permit thereafter or a privilege license and then he's got it because based on the special exception we provided.
Mm-hmm. It was a joint application. And the rendering shows this area. So if we reference the rendering site, the drawing is accurate, correct, Mr. Mallett?
I'm good with that. I just want to make sure that we're stipulating.
If we accept what's attached to the agenda package that's in the drawing, I'm assuming y'all, y'all provided it. That's correct.
Yeah, correct.
Y'all would be okay if we accept that rendering?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, do we need to make an amendment to this motion then?
If you approve the item, you're accepting the render.
To the render, the providing.
Okay. I'll just, so we're covering our bases. I'm going to make an amendment that the privilege of special exception is in compliance with the rendering provided in this package.
Okay, we have an amendment approved, um, except the site plan be, the drop rendering that's attached to the agenda item by Councilman College. Do we have a second? Second by Councilman Gilat. Okay, we're going to finish the discussion on the original motion. Councilman Gilat, you got anything else?
No.
Councilman Jackson, you got anything?
Just want to clear it up. Um, so, uh, which part is going to be the, um, the actual for the dispensary, uh, not dispensary, but.
The.
Processing.
Processing?
The cannabis facility.
Okay.
It's the rendering.
Now, where's the, where's the, um, the RV part that's going to be at?
That was on the, that was on the, um, it's to the left of that.
Okay. All right, right in this square right here.
Yeah, right there. I guess that's where the cannabis is.
Okay, all right. Just, I just wanted to know what we were looking at and I was trying to understand.
That's the, yeah.
No further questions?
Okay. Councilman George?
No comment.
We have an amendment to the motion by Councilman College, a second by Councilman Gilat. All in favor on the amendment? Councilman George?
Yes.
Motion carries one. Any opposed? Motion carries. We have a motion, an original motion by Councilman College, a second by Councilman Gilat. All in favor? Councilman George?
Yes.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Deming. Thank you, Mr. Mallett. Good luck to y'all. That brings us to business agenda item number five, approval of the docket of claims. Our city clerk, Ms. Teresa Montgomery, already provided them. They're on the website, um, for the citizens. We received them in our digital package. That brings us to any public comments? Any public comments? None? Do we have a motion to approve the docket of claims?
I make a motion. We approve the docket of claims, provide that all entries there are on are true, correct, properly entered, and not fraudulent.
Do we have a motion by Councilman College? Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Gilat. Any discussion? Start with Councilman Alvin?
No discussion.
Councilman Anderson?
No.
College?
Nope.
Councilman Gilat?
No.
Councilman Jackson? Councilman George?
No.
All in favor? Uh, Councilman George? Motion carries. That brings us to consent agenda item. All items are approved in one motion unless anybody would like to pull one. Those are one, approval of the minutes from regular council meeting held September the 6th, 2022, and two, receive August 2022 privilege license report. Three, authorization to remove office equipment and furniture from City of Goche's inventory. Four, approval to retain Butler Snow LLP to prepare and submit the City of Goche's financial disclosure statement. Five, approval of a resolution authorizing designated vehicles to be unmarked. Six, approval of the 2022 limited use agreement mile site for the Kiwanis Club Fall Festival event. Does anybody want to pull one? I would like to pull number five. Do we have a motion to approve one through four and six?
Second.
Motion by Councilman Gilat. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman College. All in favor? Motion carries. That brings us to consent number five, approval of, uh, Councilman George. Thank you. Councilman George was in it too. Also, number five, approval of resolution authorizing designated vehicles to be unmarked by our police chief, Bepper.
Right, thank you, council. Um, basically, state statute regulates every government-owned vehicle to be marked a certain way, but an exception to this is for law enforcement. And with the recent purchase of two vehicles, as the city clerk said last time we did it, and on our records, we showed last time it was done was April 5th, 2011, with Ed Williams, two police at the front. So I had included on this list every vehicle purchased since 2011 that's unmarked to make sure we're in compliance with the state law for not complying, making it, uh, our tax revenue for the city.
Well, kudos to you and your department for getting this because we would hate to know the state withheld any of our money because we didn't approve unmarked vehicles. So I'm glad to know you discovered this, that some of your training you've been going to as our new chief. So we appreciate you and all your hard work.
Yeah, question is, darn.
That's all I have. So do we have a motion to approve the resolution authorizing designated vehicles to be unmarked?
Second.
Motion by Councilman Gilat. Do we have a second? Second by Councilman Jackson. Any discussion?
No discussion.
All in favor?
Yeah.
Councilman Anderson, go ahead.
He started it out, but you.
Yeah, Anderson.
He followed him a little bit. He's right.
This is like one, two, three. How many cars?
It's eleven vehicles.
Eleven out of how many total cars we talking about? We got forty-five police vehicles?
But he went back and did them all that's unmarked that have not been approved. So some of them might.
Okay, okay. That, my second question was, how many cars are we going to be having to strip expensive equipment off of that's already been outfitted? Is, or do we, or do we have to?
They're outfitted a different way than, like, patrol cars.
How many of these already unmarked?
The ones on the list.
Oh, oh, they're already unmarked?
Yeah, and we just never approved them. That's what he's trying to say.
I'm not going to be stripping $4,000 of equipment off of eleven cars, maybe.
Unmarked just means they don't have.
I'm going with two.
Right, but I thought these are already marked. That's all.
I, I do have a question. How did we get by so long without, with the auditors that come every year?
Because they all look at that. The bearish, the bearish person's getting money and if somebody's trying to scale it.
Say that again, I couldn't hear you.
She said they all look at that, they're just getting money and they're getting money trying to scale it.
I think you heard it though, huh? You just wanted.
They teach some of this too at the MML conference. When you attend those classes, they do, um, teach elected officials some of that too. Councilman College?
I have no comments.
Councilman Gilat?
Uh.
Councilman Jackson? Councilman George? Councilman George, you have any question?
No comment.
All in favor?
All in.
Motion carries. Thank you, Councilman George. That brings us to our study agenda. Discuss citizen comments. You have three minutes to come to the podium, state your name and address if you have any comments. Any citizen comments? That brings us to council comments. We'll start with Councilman Alvin because it's our second meeting of the month. Actually, third because we have a budget meeting. So, Councilman Alvin?
Clearwater, thank you. It looks like they were trimming up over the sidewalks. I appreciate that. It was noticeable. Uh, public safety and, uh, all our city employees thank you for all you do. That's all I got.
Thank you, Councilman Alvin. Councilman Anderson?
Yes, uh, Russell, with Clearwater, um, is the median in the sides of the roads on Westgate Parkway been addressed yet?
I, I, I've been to this part on the Zook Event. I get it all scheduled. It's going to be a fair, late on.
Okay, because I got a call today and said nothing been done. I said, I thought it had, but I hadn't been down there. But it's going to be addressed this week, you said? This coming week or this week?
This week.
This week?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Russell. I appreciate it. That's all I got.
I just got it. Thank you, Councilman Anderson. Councilman College?
Uh, just like to thank or just give accolades to our recreation department. They are really, uh, putting on a show as of late between the football leagues and the indoor soccer and the movie nights and so forth. And I know y'all don't get enough accolades, so I just want to give you as many accolades as I can. But y'all are, y'all are doing a jam-up job and please keep it up. It's really bringing the community together and, uh, I'm hearing it from all over the place. So thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, um, Councilman College. Councilman Gilat?
Yeah, I've got a couple of comments. First one is, I loved it when Ms. Tiffany Murdoch, CEO of Singin' River Hospital, came and stood over here and faced the audience. And with that said, I would like to have that podium moved over to the side. So when somebody comes there, they can speak to the audience and we can hear them if it's sitting over there. It used to be over there where she's sitting right now, but they put chairs there. So I would like to request that that podium be moved over to the side. Second thing is, what's going on with graveling? Do you have an update?
I actually asked Joe O'Neill today an update, um, on graveling so we would know what the status was. His, he's not seen this in county history happen and he said GeoPave told him three weeks, but he don't know if it will really be three weeks. He can't, he will continue to check it twice a week and if he needs it more, he'll continue to maintain it. But we GeoPave, a PO was issued to GeoPave, um, and we are basically at contractors mercy to when they can get there.
Fire him and go find somebody else.
So that was.
There's not really anybody else.
That is the update. There's nobody, I mean, my understanding was.
Warren, if we keep waiting long enough, it's going to start raining again next March.
You got three contractors on the coast that pave. Warren, Stockstill, and GeoPave.
Yeah.
Well, look at Natty, they can't even finish yet.
I mean, that was the update. He said he's not seen it in county history and, um, they, he is on them and he has stayed in contact with GeoPave. So that was the last update he got from them was three weeks.
Well, I think we ought to go take, put a big billboard down there by the thing and put Joe O'Neill's phone number on it. Every resident that goes by there can call him up rather than K.C. on me.
I do want to ask, um, with that being said, can the city manager get with the county, um, Joe O'Neill, and let's just get a statement to put on our social media update so we can do also on our app an update because we are receiving a influx of calls wanting an update on it. And that will help deter.
Put board supervisors on that, both the board too, all of them, and their phone numbers. That's all I got.
You had three things, that council?
No, I had two.
Oh, you said three, okay. Councilman Jackson?
Yes, I want to get an update on Baycock Park, uh, the finishing of the basketball court, the painting. I'm starting to gain weight. Ain't shot, haven't shot basketball in a while. So I'm going to start charging y'all for, uh, gym membership in a minute.
I finished the considering. It's, you know, it has to cure for, what's it, April? Three weeks? No, it's seven days from the striking and they finish the striking Thursday. So we have seven days and we're going to do a walk-through this Thursday to take a look at it, make sure everything cured appropriately, um, and that the weather was good enough for it to cure in that time. So we'll be doing a final walk-through then on that. And then if everything goes well, the contractor will be removing, dispensing, and we'll be good to open.
I will point that to the young people. They're going to drive me crazy.
Yeah.
Um, that's pretty much all I got. Um, oh, yeah, and I want to get back again about Fraser Park, the, the land erosion, what I spoke on, I think those last meeting, um, when whoever I need to get with to make sure we get the, um, get somewhere we can level out that land because like I said, the water is washing away the land on Fraser Park.
Recently, this week, called in some dirt to try to fill in the, the holes out there. Is that what you're referring to? And then, um, today, the guys went out and did some, um, seed to help the grass grow over what we did.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yeah.
No further questions?
Thank you, Councilman Jackson. Councilman George? Thank you. I just want to echo what everybody said. Thank our city staff. They've done a great job and echo what Councilman College said about the recreation department. They've done a fine job. If you've not watched on, um, Baycock Park, it continues to be successful down there. And if that don't show, our youth needed something to do in our community to keep them off the streets. Um, I don't know what else could show you because it is needed. Um, when I was down there, once again, I can't brag on it enough that people from our sister cities said they wish they had that in their community. Um, East Central people came down here. I used to hear, they're not coming to Goche to play. It's too much going on down there. We're not bringing our children. Well, guess what? It is a safe place to go. It's got our police force down there. They're active in that community. They're active in the ballpark. It's got cameras, eyes in the sky everywhere. And if you don't believe it, go to social media. We've had to utilize the camera services and they are top-notch. Other cities are calling, asking where they come from. So it's great to be a city that is known for a beautiful park and place for children to play and have great time and fellowship together like we all had growing up. And kudos to your staff trustee for y'all staying out there and the mayor's youth council, April Samuel, for y'all working hard, sweating, running the concession stand. Also, thank our public safety for all y'all's hard work. Um, y'all have had a lot of calls and we appreciate all y'all do and all of the staff, um, Teresa, planning department. I don't think I've left any department out. If I did, I apologize, but y'all all do a great job. Clearwater, um, mowing, I guess we've gotten a plan to machancy because I am getting calls about mowing and I know y'all got as much as y'all can do with what you staff you have. But if we can just stay on the major ditches with potential heavy rains coming, um, that we would be prepared for that.
Yes, sir.
Um, also, I want to thank Waste Pro. They're not here. They are, oh, they are back there. Didn't see, my apologies. Um, y'all have had to pick up some debris at some sites where people have been dumping lately and we appreciate y'all's partnership in acting, um, promptly to get those removed. And it was in Councilman Anderson's work, so we appreciate y'all doing that. Um, and in Councilman Gilat's work. Any city manager comments?
Hold on, can I add one thing?
Councilman College?
I just forgot to mention, because it's still a little bit over a month away, but the City of Goche Conduction with, uh, Goche Pride is hosting a 5K, 5K fun run at Shepherd State Park on October the 29th. Uh, there is an Eventbrite signup on Facebook and on the web. So if you're still doing it, please sign up. We'd be welcome to have you.
Thank you, Councilman College, for not forgetting that. Um, no city manager comments? Miss Chan, Ms. Montgomery, any city clerk?
Yes, I do.
What?
Um, as you know, our commercial and property, our property and liability expires on the 30th. Generally, they would be on this agenda, but due to some issues with the insurance companies and getting the renewal quote in on the property, we did not get the second time. I'm still waiting on the property. We have to have the property insurance contracts out, signed and bound before something gets in the health. So I need you to make a motion, give in the city manager the authority to bind our insurance policies once we get the quote in. Right now, the initial quote I have is like $55,000 over last year. So we're hoping the renewal for our, from the incumbent carrier will be a little better. So, but we need to have, be able to do that as soon as it gets here. Hopefully, it'll be in tomorrow.
We need to give her authorization. We got to come back and hit a vote on it, huh?
Right.
Well, you need to give me authorization to bind it over because if a hurricane gets in, it'll go off or a storm, then it's been just without.
Right.
So then I can bring it back and you can ratify it on the floor.
Okay.
That's what she's saying.
Do we have?
Make a motion that we authorize city manager to bound, um, insurance once it's determined or?
There are no insurance.
Once we receive all quotes.
We need to do some quote.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman College. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Gilat. Any discussions? Start with Councilman Alvin?
No discussion.
Councilman Anderson?
No.
Councilman College?
No.
Councilman Gilat?
No.
Councilman Jackson?
None.
Councilman George?
No comment.
All in favor? Motion carries because we surely don't want to not have no insurance. Anything else, Ms. Montgomery?
That's all.
That brings us to our city attorney comments. Do you have anything, Mr. Deming?
No, I don't.
Thank you. We hope y'all have the rest of the creative of the week. Do we have a motion to adjourn until October the 4th, 2022 at 6:30 PM?
Second.
Motion by Councilman Gilat. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman College. All in favor? Councilman George?
Uh.
Motion carries. We're adjourned.